Okay, good evening. I call a meeting to order. It's Eastline Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting of October 1st, 2025. We're here in the Eastline Town Hall Upper Meeting Room and it's about 7:01. We get started, so if you surprise in three seconds. Fledgled allegiance.
All right.
Fledgled allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Sorry. All right, so are there any additional agenda or consent calendar items? We have being none. I invite if there are any public delegations that would like to address the board, is there anyone that would, yes, if you would, come to the podium and please stick your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Wendy Seans. I'm the registrar, address 10 Green Valley Lakes. Um, I just wanted to come in front of y'all tonight because a lot of times people come up here and they complain about something wrong with the town, something wrong with something. But I wanted to give a shout out to one of our town workers. Yesterday, my co-registrar and I had a wonderful, wonderful meeting with Julie Wilson, the director of emergency management director. She had helped us revise our election emergency plan and manual. She'd been working on this since last year we did this big townwide drill, statewide drill about attacks on the election. And far too often our town workers get overlooked. They don't get the praise that they need and that they deserve for a job well done. And I just, I was so impressed with her knowledge and professionalism and just how incredibly thorough she was by helping us put this election emergency manual plan together. And, you know, there's not a lot of women, especially in department head jobs. And when we see them shining, we should call them out. So I just wanted to come up and publicly commend her. And I just, I was blown away with how thorough and professional and just everything she did for us. So I just wanted to take a moment to give another lady a shout out. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board of selectmen tonight? I'll ask again, anyone else? All right, being none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing of September 17th, 2025?
Move to approve the public hearing minutes of September 17th, 2025 as submitted.
Second.
I hear a second. Is there any discussion or changes? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Next, do I hear a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 17th, 2025?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 17th, 2025 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a first, a second. Are there any changes to the minutes or corrections? All right, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda, item E is the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for October 1st, 2025 in the amount of $3,508.50.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? It doesn't appear to be anything unusual in the consent calendar. If there is any discussion, then I would call it for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Old business. So appointments to the pension board. Now, I did, you know, this is an important seat. And I did take the liberty of, and with the help of Stacy, our human resources director, prepare a proposed process for choosing the members to the pension board. So there is, there is a spot that needs to be filled. And we have some, you know, standards here. What we thought we would do is make sure those that are on the unions and the union eligible employees are aware that this position is up for being appointed and give them an opportunity to make it known that they would be interested in serving on the pension board. Once we have the members that are interested, then we can submit those. And then the Board of Selectmen can look at those that are interested and we can decide who we want to appoint. Does that sound like a fair process to everyone? Any suggestions on how we might? Yeah? Okay, so we won't try to appoint anybody tonight, but I'll let you take this home, you can read it over. And of course, any concerns you have about the process, but I think it's pretty straightforward. And we want to make sure that, you know, whatever union member is on the pension board, that everyone has an opportunity to apply for that position. So that's about it for the discussion, unless there's anything else anyone wants to add.
I would just ask, will union leadership be a part of this? I see the point saying they must be in good standing with their union if applicable.
I think, I think I would imagine that they would, if someone advances themselves, the union leadership has a problem with it having an opportunity.
They'd let it be known?
Yeah, okay.
Says here all union presidents will be notified, so yeah, they'll know.
So in the interest of transparency, both were. Okay. Item number three is discussion of possible action of the town clerk annual grant, that's 3A. Do you see the town clerk here?
I am.
Karen, if you could identify yourself for the record. We all know you are.
Karen Dalbo, Nine Echo Road, Niantic. So this is a yearly grant. You probably remember, or might not, that I came last year, similar thing. Basically, it's the same thing every year except the amount changes. So it's all based on the population of the town and how much money they decide to give out. This year, I am using it to recreate old Board of Selectmen minutes, put them into books. Similar project I did last year with some zoning minutes and planning minutes. And we're going to start at 1963, which is where we go back to for the Board of Selectmen minutes. Move forward, whatever the grant money covers. I'm also using it to buy books and paper for our land records, which have gotten very pricey over the years. So instead of increasing my budget every year to pay for that, I wanted to use some of the grant money to buy that. And that's it. And it comes from the state library.
So this will be digitizing those?
They actually, those are actually already digitized, but we're going to actually be putting them onto the special paper, preservation paper, and putting them into books.
Right.
Yep.
So those will be actually hard copies that are preserved?
Yep.
That's good.
That's great, good.
Thanks.
Any questions about that?
Yes, under number seven on the list, insurance, contractor agrees under the contractors while performing services specified in this contract that it should pay sufficient insurance. I'm sure that, am I correct in saying that our town insurance policy would cover that?
Well, I don't want to, I wouldn't want to pass on an insurance coverage question, but we do have, I believe sufficient insurance in the unlikely event that someone gets injured copying the files.
So that these particular documents are not leave in the building. They have the digital ones already. There's, nothing's leaving the building.
Oh, I see, they make the digital and.
Yeah, yeah, they're going to remake them from the digital copies that they already have. So there's nothing to.
Yeah. So low risk.
They're in our vault.
Okay. All right, just being careful and then it's an important question. Thank you. Roseanne? Anyone else have any concerns? Now, do I hear a motion?
Move the following, resolve to appropriate the sum of $5,000 received from a grant from the State of Connecticut Library for preservation of historic documents in the town clerk's office, including reformatting and microfilming projects for public records. Note, this action does not require Board of Finance or town meeting approvals.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Any abstaining? Being none, that motion carries.
Thank you for doing the extra work.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate all you do.
You too.
Have a good night. All righty, so next is to review and potentially appoint CIP committee members. So there is a handout. Yeah, this is sort of a timeline for the capital improvement committee. And as we have capital improvement plan. And we've made mention of it several times. This is an important committee that allows us to look at the assets of the town and evaluate the need to replace them or not. And when they might need replacement, it's actually a sort of a physical look at the assets and deliberations with the committee to help us prepare the capital improvement plan. And in previous budget years, not the most recent one, because we have this committee, but once prior to that, you know, at the end, it was, you know, a very long day trying to put together the budget. And a lot of times it was kind of rushed through the capital improvement plan. And so last year we did it differently and we're going to continue to do it differently. And so we want to select members for the committee. So we sort of have, there's a timeline here if you want to look at it. And today's the first discussion, possible action on two members and a resident representative. So I think we should perhaps wait to the next meeting and see if anyone has someone that they want to suggest and advance to the board here as a resident representative.
Can I make comment on this?
Yes, of course.
Do you want me to make a motion on any particular person or just talk freely here?
Well, I think, I mean, for right now, I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to, but, you know, feel free to express whatever you think.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at this timeline and one detail that it neglects to include is the fact that we have an election coming up and any member that we nominate could find themselves out of office in November. So my suggestion is for the sake of continuity and creating, make sure we don't have a brain drain that the two members on our board that are almost all but guaranteed a spot in the next administration be nominated for, for these two positions.
I think that's, I think that's an important point and one that I hadn't been lost on me in thinking about this. I'm glad you brought it up.
Can I also say before? The charter was previously revised because Board of Selectmen was acutely sensitive to a sort of brain drain and experience drain, whereas we all turned over at the same time.
Yeah.
Creating a moment where one of the most important governing bodies in the town was freshman class each time. So taking this opportunity to avoid that, I think, would be important, especially since we have built up such good momentum in the last budget year with this.
Right.
So that's why I say what I said.
No, I think that's a point well taken. Why don't we, let's discuss that. Let's start this under the table. Don, what are your feelings about that?
I didn't have a solution, but I was worried about the election as well.
Yeah.
I don't mind that solution, but I didn't, it's up to the people that are in the position to do that. They wanted to entertain it. But I think that, because I was on it last time.
Yeah.
I think it should be wait till the election is through.
The problem with waiting is we really want to get going on budgetary concerns. And so that is one thought to wait till after the election to see who's still seated here. But then they would take another whole meeting to appoint. I think Jason's idea is a reasonable one, but I think we first have to decide, let's see what the temperature of the board is. And see if the people that would be involved, Candace, which would be Candace and Anne, if they'd be interested in serving. So Candace, let's hear from you. What are your thoughts?
Sure, no, I think that's very reasonable and certainly makes sense. And I would entertain the idea, sure.
Would you want to serve that way on the?
Sure. Yeah, I think that this was a great established and much needed.
Yeah.
I know coming on to this board and going through the first budget season, although very experienced with the Board of Education's process. The process here was much different, much more challenging. And found, not, I believe I'm the one that brought it up, because I found myself coming to a meeting and going through all of these items and having so many questions
Right.
with not enough time, to be honest with you. So the establishment of this was created to make the process more efficient. And I'm more than.
Okay, thank you. So you'd be in favor if we made that decision tonight as a board?
Sure.
Anne, what's your feeling?
Okay, so I'm just looking at the timeline. So October 1st, discussion, possible action from the Board of Selectmen. 10-6, discussion, possible action from Board of Ed. 10-8, discussion, possible action from Board of Finance meeting. Announce full committee on 10-15. It looks like we're not really meeting, but starting till after the election. So my idea is I am more than happy to do it. My concern, and I'm not trying to overstep, but some of the meetings start at like 3:00 in the afternoon, and I know, I think you work full time. So that, that's just my concern for you. And obviously, it's your schedule. You can arrange it how you want. But that was the only thing. So I would say that, yes, I'm happy to do it. Candace is happy to do it. But later on, if it ends up being where the schedules have conflict, that, you know, maybe we could switch out.
Accommodate.
Yeah.
Sure, so there would be accommodations and I would imagine we could provide a Zoom when they call us.
Yeah, I'm sure we can.
Yeah.
Right.
There's some hands-on stuff too, you know, we get on the bus and ride around and look at stuff.
Yeah, it's fun.
Yeah, it is kind of fun.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, no, I, your concerns are well taken. One of the, you know, discussing with Kevin Gervais, yeah, he, so the first meeting is the 13th. So the fifth is the next Board of Selectmen meeting after the election. And then 14 days, that would be the 19th, we'd be a few days late and he really wants to get moving on this, so.
Yeah, no, I think it's fine. What I'm just saying, if there's, if there's conflict sometimes, like, you know, sometimes I have court or there's something that I can't, you know what I mean, like get out of.
Yeah.
I just want to kind of bring that up.
And, you know, I think we try to be flexible with the meetings. But you'd be minimal to serving if we.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, no.
And, and do you agree that this is, it's not giving a deposition.
Yeah, I know.
No, sorry, I got in the deposition. But do you think there's a good idea?
Yeah, I do, yes.
And it's your idea, so I think you must be, are you in favor?
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to one point that Anne brought up. I think that the government, this board, any board that we create should be extremely responsive to the fact that folks have jobs and work. And if there is a position that cannot be filled because someone has a job or a family or a sick relative, I think that falls to us as a failure. If we want to have representative government, the government needs to work really hard to make sure that it does represent the people.
But do you think that's workable?
I think it's workable as long as we're like, okay.
Flexible.
If Candace can't be there, we'll schedule the meeting differently. I think that's really important.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that. Roseanne, what are your thoughts?
I think this is a departure from our usual procedure where anyone on the board that would like to serve would be asked. Not simply because with the charter change, there are now two four-year terms where those people essentially are automatically elected. We also, using that rationale, do not know who the first next Board of Selectmen will be.
That's right.
So I am opposed to this. I'm not saying that I would necessarily like to be on this commission, but I'm opposed to that as a procedure, as a departure from what I think is fair play.
Okay.
Roseanne brings up a very different point.
Yeah.
Cheers. That's why we discussed this.
Why is this kind of? Did, I was about to say the same thing.
I thought it was me.
No, I thought it was me too.
All right, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Did you see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I think so. Okay. Get to a certain age, that means something to you, you know. So, so you would, I mean, that is a valid point. So how could we? No, it is. So how can we do this? All right, if we meet on the.
Well, I mean, I guess after the election, there could be a special meeting.
For a change.
For the Board of Ed to, no, the Board of Ed, sorry, Board of Selectmen to
To resume.
To appoint two people to this.
Okay, so everybody else will be determined. I mean, we'll receive input from the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance. And then on the 15th, with the exception of the Board of Selectmen, we could announce, we could select the other members to the committee, correct? We can have all the work done except the Board of Selectmen members. Does that make sense?
Sure.
So you're saying defer this to the next meeting?
Well, not defer, I think we'd have to, you know, to accommodate, and it's a valid concern, and one that I have too. If we aren't comfortable with just simply picking the two people we know will still be here on the board, we could defer the decision to the 5th. We will then know who the future board members are going, will still be seated, but we'll know.
We're talking November 5th.
November 5th.
After the election, okay.
The new people won't be sworn in yet.
No.
But we would be able to appoint them, but they wouldn't be able to deliberate.
Well, that's why I said maybe it's better if you get two people now and then if later on, they could be changed after the new board gets sworn in, if need be. If that's, you know what I mean?
It's a little bit of a dilemma.
Yeah, because last year we didn't have an election.
And we didn't have, yeah, and we really didn't have this shut up yet, and we kind of.
I mean, I'm going to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Whether or not we have an election or not, I would volunteer for this. This is something that, you know, whoever the next board is, I would put my name in the hat to do this. I thought it was invaluable experience. I know Don was on it last time.
Yeah.
So I don't know what, you know.
Like I said, I just, I know what Kevin's wants are, but I think we can catch up pretty quick with, after the election, meaning that with, they mean the people. Unless you're in a rush to do it now, but just saying as far as. Well, I'm just trying, let's just think about what the mechanics would be. So on November 5th, we'll know presumably who's on the, on the board, right? And we could ask them if they want to serve on, you know, on that board, whoever the winners are. And I guess they could be appointed, but.
They haven't been sworn in yet.
But they can still deliberate, I think, because we have a, I think it's.
Well, the next meeting, when do they get sworn in?
They could get sworn in the next day, right? You can get, no, but no, has it been December, December 1st?
Monday.
Monday?
Yeah.
The first Monday, December, first Monday.
But couldn't they still participate in the meeting on the 13th even though they're not sworn in? They could be made part of the.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, I don't.
They just can't vote, but I don't think that first day, there's really any.
There's not any voting until.
It's, yeah, yeah, there won't be. The finance director will probably present everything, you know, that kind of thing. So, yeah, they can.
So, all right, why don't we have this as a plan? If everyone agrees with it, let's think about it for a minute.
What are you suggesting?
So the idea would be, at our next meeting on the 15th, we'll know who the members will be from the Board of Ed and from the Board of Finance, who they want to, although that's going to be up to.
Yeah, they're all up for.
But that's up to them, what they want to do. I would.
And they are staggered in such a way that the whole board is not.
All right, so let's, let's do this. How about on the 5th, we'll know who's who, who's in, who's out. And then we can appoint members accordingly. And they won't be sworn in yet, maybe, or maybe not. But they can at least attend the meetings and they won't be able to vote until they're sworn in. But there isn't any voting on the capital improvement panel until, you know, much later on.
Could I make a suggestion on this?
Yeah.
How about we do kind of a reductive approach, which is to say that there are five eligible candidates here, one of which has said she's not necessarily interested. I will do the opposite of throwing my hat in the ring, which is take it out of the ring. I don't, I'm not interested in this at this time. And Candace has said that they are interested, which leaves only Don. And if he's comfortable making a determination at this time, I'd love to hear if he wants to be on it again or if he needs more time. And that could kind of, the issue could resolve itself.
Well, I didn't say I wouldn't do it.
Oh.
I said at this point, while we're having this discussion.
You might have some interest. Don, I think we got to go back to, Don, what's your.
To wait.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to see what kind of cards you're playing with.
Yeah, I think that's right. So we'll table this. Look at, we got this schedule at least to think about. And I think what we do is on November 5th, we'll know who's, who's who.
Correct.
Who isn't. And then decisions can be made accordingly. And even though they, these individuals might not be able to deliberate or vote, they'll certainly be able to listen and start getting a sense of what the capital improvement plan committee is all about. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if need be, you know, they can schedule more in, you know what I mean, in the other months, more meetings or what have you.
I think that addresses it. And I think in the interest of fairness to everybody and give everyone an opportunity that might want to serve. So it's really, I mean, it's a great committee.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it is quite insightful. Okay, good. All right, so we'll just table that. All right, next, 3C is discussion of possible action on a grant for roof replacement at Niantic Center School. Do I hear any discussion? You want, let's hear the motion.
Grant roof replacement at Niantic Center School. Move the following, resolve that the Eastline Board of Selectmen authorizes the Eastline Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the roof replacement project at Niantic Center School.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, two seconds, good. So, I mean, this is pretty straightforward. Be great if we can get a grant to assist in replacing the Niantic Center School roof. Any concerns? Any for the discussion? Or I call the vote?
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
If somebody knows, the grant, does that cover just like 40% of the roof replacement or like what percentage?
Maybe.
Forty percent, 40% of eligible costs.
That's what I thought. Okay, I just wanted to confirm it. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, that was our superintendent, Jeff Newton, and he said it was 40%. Okay, all righty, and we said all that. Be ready to vote? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next. Discussion of possible action, prepare schematics for the roof replacement at Niantic Center School. Do I hear a motion?
Move the following, resolve that the Eastline Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof replacement project at Niantic Center School.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any, any additional discussion? We've already given permission to seek the grant and this would just be preliminary schematics.
So just a quick question, does the grant cover the schematics? Do you know by any chance?
So Marianna Stevens, Director.
Do you mind just stepping up so people can? I appreciate that, thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Marianna Stevens, Director of Finance for the Eastline Public Schools. So the grant covers a portion of the architectural fees based on the ineligible costs, which are limited in a roof replacement projects. They are prorated.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks, thanks for addressing that. Any other? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries. Next is to schedule the public hearing. Next is to schedule the public hearing to amend the ordinance, school building committee.
Move the following, resolve that the Eastline Board of Selectmen will have a public hearing at seven P M. on Wednesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, at the Eastline Town Hall, one oh eight Pennsylvania Avenue, Niantic, Connecticut, to consider the proposed ordinance titled Ordinance Establishing the School Building Committee. And that the Board of Selectmen cause a public notice of this public hearing to be published in accordance with the requirements of the town charter and state law.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so, uh, this still is dealing with the, uh, the roof, yep. And so we do have a building committee that oversees those types of projects, and this is amending the, uh, the ordinance so that they can serve. All right, any, uh, any other questions? Done this many times before with the building committee, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, the motion carries. Ex officio reports, Don, we'll start with you.
The, uh, two things I want to address, the end of our last Board of Selectmen meeting, when Mr. Plakowski was a little disappointed in the, uh, the leaf issue, dropping off the leaves and the fees associated. Fortunately, the next night, I got to speak with him at length. He, he was just flyuntited, so we had a little failure in communication there. And, or whatever, but, um, he's better, we had a nice talk, calmed him down a little bit, and, uh, we can address it again another day, but. He says I have to just simply pass that on, and I don't think that's right, that's what business is, you know, I'm saying, if there's a cost. He was upset at the fact that we voted on something and we, we retract it at the next meeting, not, no, much later, and he was a little disappointed in that, and he voiced his opinion. He's a lot better, and, uh, he's, he's willing to accept and pass that through to his customers for now. Tomorrow night, there's been an emergency, not an emergency, a quick hearing, uh, at Wells Co. regarding clams available. Shipping clams from the Guilford, Branford area to here to be planted for harvesting. I, I, it's funny, I just, this past, it was on CBS Sunday Morning or something, you gotta be very careful when you do that, because you bring in whatever those clams or that shellfish has into your waters, and it's gotta be done with government watch, so that, the state aquaculture, Department of Aquaculture. So I'm just gonna make sure at tomorrow's meeting that those who adhere to us, not just loading onto somebody's truck and bringing it up here. That's to make sure that we're not bringing some of these bad clams up there.
Where are they coming from?
Branford area, Guilford area.
And how do they determine if clams are bad, like, what would they do, do you know, by any chance?
No, ma'am, I don't, there, there's, there's, sure, there's routines for testing.
Yeah, okay.
You wanna take, test a few of them? No, but, um, it, the clams seem to do very, very well in the river. But we, I just, when I, when I saw the story and I tied it together, then I did a study on it, and it's, funny thing about AI, be very careful. First thing I did was, is it, is it dangerous? Absolutely it's dangerous, don't do it. Okay, I went back and asked the same question again, and he goes, no, as long as it's handled correctly, it's okay. And so do your own research, and that's what I've been doing, and, and if, if it's handled correctly, it, it should prove to be safe.
I, I think they've done this before, too.
Oh, yes, they have, they have, I just hope the procedure was the same before, yeah.
Yeah, and something, I know they have a fair amount of experience with it.
But the meeting was real quick, and these clams, these clams are available, and I just don't want to rush into doing something wrong again.
Absolutely.
Thanks. That's it for me.
That's it?
Yep.
Well, you can say more, I mean, you don't have to clam up, buddy. All right. Yeah, I had, I had to get ahead of this. Oh, yeah, I'm really funny. Candace, what do we got?
I have nothing to report.
Yeah.
All right, so I just have, um, this is, kind of harkens back to our last meeting where there was an issue of the poet laureate, and I said that I would speak to Lisa Timothy because I'm ex officio for the, uh, library board. So basically, I was just kind of doing some quick research to see if we've ever had a poet laureate. So I, I spoke to Lisa Timothy, I spoke to Karen Gallo, I also spoke to Esther Williams, who was an old town clerk here many years ago. And when I called her, she was actually at a reunion with all the old town employees, and she asked all of them, literally, if they had ever heard of a poet laureate, and they all said unanimously, no. Um, I also spoke to Elizabeth Kaczka, who is a town historian, and then, um, I just know some, like, older people in town who are, like, you know, in their eighties, so I called them just to kind of inquire, um, who had, you know, lived here for many, many years, and they had no idea. So the only thing I did find, I'll see my notes, was, and this might be what Roseanne was referring to. There were, there was a, in July of, no, June of twenty twenty-one, they're saying, at the graduation, there was a high school senior laureate.
Yes, every year, every year, it did happen.
And, no, yeah. So that's what I think maybe the.
So there's an, also they from a senior.
Yeah, so that's the only kind of laureate, uh, that I could find. So I just wanted to kind of bring that up, I know it's not on the agenda, but I did say I would kind of research that, so.
Thank you.
That was it.
Anything else?
Yeah.
We're good, Chase?
Uh, I went to the Stars to STEM annual meeting last night, um, their finances are in great shape, they had a really good year. They're looking to expand, they've got all kinds of ideas, it's a really great group of people with a lot of ideas. There will also be a First Friday Musical performance this Friday, Second Chance Acoustic, Second Chance is a local Eastline family band, and they're gonna have kind of an offshoot of that perform at the Planetarium on Friday night from seven to nine. All ages show, ten dollars at the door, tickets are available online. Also, uh, I'm not sure if anyone else wanted to, to talk about this, but, uh, there was a, kind of a historic moment the other day when, um, Baypoint tenants organized to become the twentieth tenants' union in the state of Connecticut. And, uh, there was, you know, much, much fanfare and, and discussion and to-do about this over at, uh, Baypoint, with the residents kind of, uh, stating their, their goals and what they want to do going forward. So that was kind of an interesting moment, um, in the town of Eastline, and perhaps an inflection point.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for me.
That band, the Second Chance, they played at, uh, they played.
They do.
Yeah, I doubt it, at the, at the, at the club, they're, they're very popular, I guess that would be a nice thing, I hope, I hope it's well attended.
Same.
Roseanne?
I don't have anything this evening.
Okay, so I, uh, I really don't have anything to report, ex officio, the police service. I, I can only say that, uh, the new, uh, police chief, Chief Glenn, is very busy, and, you know, the day after he was sworn in, he was in my office with only one to ten minutes of my time, and had three suggestions that we're looking at and working on, and, uh, he's very organized and a taskmaster. I think that's what we needed, very happy, I hope things are going with that.
Dan, may I ask a question about the follow-up for the safety officer at the high school? That conversation, what, what was the follow-up on that?
So, uh, I didn't have a specific conversation about that with him. Because that was on the, uh, the first, the, the very next day that he got sworn in. But it, you know, it's a matter of staffing, they're down three police officers, and so there's gonna have to be a discussion with how they get staffed.
Right, so that's what I thought, I thought that's supposed to, so we had a Board of Selectmen meeting.
Right.
They came in at that meeting, I asked if you were going to be having the conversation, right, between you and the chief and the superintendent to come up with some sort of plan, because it is a significant safety concern.
Yeah, so we are trying to schedule that meeting, so.
Okay.
There was some back and forth, um, we did have an email, I, I thought that they had met, uh, last week, but apparently, and I'm not, I don't think they did. I, I thought that, uh, Jeff Newton and the police chief were me, I had an email that they were planning a meeting, but I'm not sure that that happened.
Can I?
I don't know, my knowledge, well, can I, yeah, just one second, just, I want to finish.
Can I speak to this?
Yeah. Sure.
So my knowledge, though, was that you were supposed to be having the conversation, or you were supposed to come to some sort of agreement, because it is a safety concern, so for the next meeting, I'd like to have a follow-up.
Sure.
On what's going on.
Well, I did, I did speak with the chief, I did, I mean, I didn't have a three-way meeting, but the concern is, how do, how do we get coverage? You know, they're down three officers, how does he do that? And he's willing to have the discussion, so.
Okay.
I'm hopeful next week that we can maybe, I can have a discussion with him and Kevin Gervais, the finance director, and then maybe, after that, bring the superintendent in to, uh, after we have an idea of what we realistically can do.
Right, we just don't want to, we don't, I just don't, I'm not in support of just waiting it out, I think that really something needs to happen.
No. No, I don't think anybody is, um, you know, he's had a lot of concerns and things he's dealing with, but I, uh, you know, that's in the works, to try to put together a meeting where there's something meaningful that we can discuss.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah, of course.
Can I speak?
Yeah, sure.
I, I just wanted to let you know that after the last meeting, I, um, kind of like Don, reached out to some of those folks who spoke, um, to try and, um, set up informal meetings, because I, I had a lot of questions about just, just the whole, um, the whole discussion and.
On which topic, on the police?
School resource officers, yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. And, um, while I was at this meeting, uh, they had to go to another meeting so they could meet with the chief of police and have this discussion. So I feel like there's an awful lot of discussion happening, um, but I really think it's, it's a big issue. And I, I do think it warrants a large discussion at the Board of Ed, at the Board of Selectmen, folks talking to each other. I, I mean, I even think this is kind of a across-town sort of issue. There's, there's certain elements and dynamics going on that, you know, you have to really consider not just our town and our schools, but the whole kind of region and the, uh, security apparatus around that. So it's, it's a really great, big issue, and I, I still do not feel well-informed enough to make any sort of decision on it. I mean, it's not my responsibility at this point, should I win the election, it will come before us at the next set of budgeting, um, discussions, which is why I reached out, because I wanted to get ahead of this, and my gosh, you have to run really far and really hard to get ahead of this, because there's a lot to it. So I would just throw that out so, so the board knows, we need to really educate ourselves.
Yeah, and I think there's some, uh, how would I describe it? I, I'm not sure that we all really understand what the role of the recess, resource officer is. It's not so much security as, as, I mean, there are security people, a, a, and that, and we, you know, we don't want to talk about that too much, what those measures are. But, um, this is more, you know, promoting the relationship with the police and, um, the students. So it's, it's that, more that aspect of it than the, the security aspect of it. So, um, but it is very important, you know, there was the DARE program and offshoots of that program. And I think it's, it's, it's very important, ever more important these days. So it's not something we're just gonna drop, but it, it, it has to be addressed, and it has to be addressed in a certain way, and hopefully we can get all the players together.
I'm, it's not up for debate, I'm not debating it, um, and I heard what you said, and I can accept that, but I firmly disagree. I firmly disagree.
I'm what?
On the fact that the resource officer is primarily, um, really just relationships, it is absolutely partly security.
Okay.
It is.
Is it, all right, you have a better sense of it than I have.
And, um, not so much just at the high school, there was also a sense in the middle school and at all of the elementary schools. So, um, it is being, it is a safety concern, uh, in my opinion, for sure. And I think that if there were people here, like they were the other night, uh, I think that they would be in agreement. So if there are people that really don't understand what the resource officer is, what the resource officer does, they need to be educated on it, because that position is lacking, and it is a safety concern.
Okay, um, I appreciate that, so certainly want to do the right thing, and security is really our number one duty. So hopefully we can arrange, you know, we work with the parties that are involved, I think Kevin Gervais, police chief, superintendent, and see what we can. Okay, um, any other ex officio comments? First selectmen's report, uh, let's see, as you can see, the ABA compliance in, in Town Hall is, is nearing completion. We've got, we're still wrapping up the, uh, the chairlift, but that's coming along, and I'm hopeful that in the next couple of weeks, all of the, all of the improvements will be completed. We did have another, uh, fireboat, uh, service call rescue, uh, it's been, it's been in service for two weeks, and twice now, it's gone out and, uh, helped people, helped, I'm, I'm not sure it's exactly a rescue, but it was a service call, it was a distress boat, and, uh, uh, there were no other resources, and they were able to get out there and, uh, help that person, so, um, it's really getting some use. The project, I know there's a lot of interest in the construction project down Route one sixty-one, I ninety-five. Soon, the exit seventy-four off-ramp will be shut down, and hopefully, two weeks after that, it'll be the brand-new one. We can see sort of beginnings of it, it's half-built, will be completed, it'll cross over where the old exit seventy-four is. And so people exiting off the highway will be on the new off-ramp, and very soon, the, uh, southbound traffic will be over on top of the new bridge, and that will mean that they'll be able to begin the project of taking down the final section of the old bridge. So things are moving along quite nicely, they've had good weather, and, uh, it's moving along. That's all I have to report, seeing. I don't, not aware of any communications, is there any public comment? Rich, I see you're here, did you want to comment? Okay, um, so there's no selectmen's response, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn the October first, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen at seven forty-seven P M.
Do I hear a second?
Second, good.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, we adjourn.